All right, so today, since we are utilizing different types of technology to have this meeting, I am going to need everybody's help today to make sure that we're giving everybody an opportunity to participate. So we have Holly over there who's gonna raise her hand to let me know when someone who's on the screen need to talk, and then we have Counselor Daniel, who's going to be looking for texts from Charlie to let me know when he needs to say something. I ask that everyone be mindful and allow everyone to finish their sentences so we can make sure that everyone is heard. We okay, everybody? Thank you. All right. What we have now is roll call.
I'll be taking roll call by vote. So Counselor Carson. Counselor Hensley.
Here.
Counselor Grego.
Counselor Grego? Are you here?
Here.
Okay.
Counselor Royals.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Daniel.
Here.
Counselor V. Hill.
Here.
All counselors present and a quorum has been declared. Counselors Hensley, V. Hill, and Grego are present via the Zoom conference.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay, up next, we have Agenda Approval. Counselor Brawls.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? If not, well, we'll go ahead and do the... You go ahead.
Counselor Carson. Counselor Royals.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Holly. Okay, up next, we have our citizen comment. This is the part of the agenda to where we allow citizens to come up to the podium and voice any comments that you may have. We do ask that you keep your comments to less than three minutes. If you are still talking, when the clock goes off at three, in three minutes, I will politely ask you to sit down in your comments at that time. Okay? So I only have one comment card, and it's for Sinead Diaz.
Hi, Counsel.
Hi.
I'm glad I'm over here and you're over there. So I have four major issues, and they're comments, concerns, questions that I just want you thinking about, and we can talk about it later, I'm sure. So just to kind of go in order, the first is, and each of these have to do with our unsheltered populations. So I'm specifically talking about our homeless population who are trying to live outdoors. This is either along the river, in any open doorway, just kind of any particular spot that they can find that they consider home for the evening anyways. So first off was...
Could you say your name?
My name is Sinead Diaz. Sinead, yeah. Thank you, David. So first off, with the closures of different businesses and other facilities, particularly La Puente Shelter, as well as the Alamosa Rec Center, I'm worried that folks are not having access to showers and other hygiene-related necessities. So whether it's going to use a restroom or being able to wash their hands, and I think this is something that is important for us to be thinking about. How do we offer an alternative for folks to just continue to meet those basic needs? Showers in particular, washing hands, and other sanitization needs when folks are buying things off the stores or off the shelves at the rate that they are, then, I mean, there's the lack of access and then the lack of just being able to actually buy these things. So having things like hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies and wipes available for folks is important. I also feel like bathrooms is a super necessity right now. So we need to think about how we can make bathrooms available for folks that are just public access restrooms. An idea that I had was being able to open up our park restrooms, especially right now in an emergency time. I do realize, too, that opening bathrooms is highly dependent upon the weather. So if it is too cold and the pipes might freeze, that might, I mean, I know that's an issue, but it's still a gap in our services. So how can we then provide resources to folks who need to use the restroom even? And then another issue that has come up is just food in general. I don't want to speak for the general public and lack of access, but what I can speak to, because I do work for La Puente and I just got off the phone with our Food Bank Director, is over the past three days, we have seen an uptick in people who are utilizing our services. Of the people in the last three days, we have 56 folks who are brand new. So they're new people. They're looking specifically, maybe just for the one thing, hey, City Market was out of potatoes, or they're looking for resources for the rest of the month. We are allowing people to come monthly. Even if they came on March 1st, we're allowing anyone to get their monthly distribution right now, but still, if this is any indication of what is to come, we will need more resources. So just one more thing to think about is food. So again, just to kind of repeat the major thoughts that I have here, lack of access to showers, lack of access to restrooms, need for sanitization or some way to wash hands. I would love to just put out a hand washing unit somewhere along the river, or in our public parks even. And then finally, just a concern around food and access to food for our Food Bank and then wider, of course, too. Sorry. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So what we're gonna do is, I'll turn this back over to Heather for any follow-up at this time.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Sinead, as well, for sending the comments in advance. It helped staff do some brainstorming on some potential answers and thoughts to try to get the ball rolling. In regards to the bathrooms out in the parks, we will be watching those closely, but we can't turn, we can't just open those up until we can be assured the pipes won't freeze and that the weather is cooperating. So staff will monitor those closely. We also want to make sure we manage expectations in regards to, a lot of times, we see some damage to these bathrooms, some vandalism, or people putting things down the toilets that shouldn't be down the toilets and some things like that. So we would really, really like to get some messaging out there through all our partners that when they do get opened up, you know, it's there to help serve in this capacity, and we really need people to be taking care of them, and that will allow for them to be open. Andy and I also talked about maybe looking at putting a porta potty at Cole Park in the meantime before we can get the bathrooms opened up. Again, I just want to offer the caution, what we've seen when we've used porta potties in some parks is some extreme vandalism to where the supplier will not let us rent it any longer. So hopefully, the porta potty will be used appropriately, and it's something we can keep out there until we can open up the park bathrooms. And so that's something we're gonna look into. I know the concept of a hand washing and all of that. We don't have those types of facilities. So I think the county may have some. So our recommendation would be for individuals to contact the county and see if that's available through there. And then lastly, from a brainstorming, Andy's gonna think through a little bit more of, can we open just the rec shower? It would be tightly controlled. That would be the only thing that's being used in the building, because as you know, we've closed that down per the governor's recommendations as well as the county health. But we could do it for maybe a few hours every day, and they would only have 15 minutes to get in and then get out type of situation. But we are gonna check with county health because we need to make sure this is a safe environment that we're creating. I'm not sure having communal showers, if we don't have the ability to keep them at a certain standard and what that standard is from cleanliness. I mean, we can keep them clean, but I don't know what type of disinfection is gonna need to be had and those types of things. So it's some initial brainstorming. Hopefully, we will see some brainstorming occur with our partners like La Puente. I get, you know, everyone needing to look out after their employees. I feel the same way of needing to make sure we're protecting our employees while still providing some services as well. So it'd be great to see maybe some brainstorming there on ways to come at these issues that were presented tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Heather. Appreciate it. Okay. Before we move on to ceremonial items, I just want to thank the staff for the arrangements that you made here to make sure that everyone was properly spaced apart from one another, even the people out in the audience as well. So thank you for doing that and making sure that everybody's in compliance as far as the distance rule is concerned. Okay? Thank you. All right. Up next, we have ceremonial items. The introduction of our new GIS planning technician, Mr. Deacon.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So the city wanted GIS and planning bigger and better, so here he is. I'm pleased to introduce Clifton Simmons. Cliff has been with us for about almost two months now. He's an Adam State graduate, so great to capture some talent and retain that talent here. He's got degrees in geography and anthropology from Adam State. He brings a lot of different skills in addition to GIS, some civil engineering backgrounds, soil testing, so a lot of skills that we can really put to use. In his short time, I mean, he's really hit the ground running. He's been able to produce maps for really all of our public works divisions, PD. There's a really cool interactive parks map that's gonna be coming publicly available sometime soon. So we're really, really excited to have him. Been a great asset so far. And leave it, Tim, if he wants to say anything else.
Like Deacon said, my name is Cliff. I moved here about six years ago from Iowa to attend Adam State, where I graduated in 2018 with honors. And then the last two years, I have been spending time doing civil engineering work, kind of seeing construction from the beginning. And once I saw an opportunity to work for the city of Alamosa, I jumped at the opportunity. I love this area. I don't want to go back to Iowa or leave or anything like that, so I'm here to stay for as long as you guys help me. And I'm very excited to utilize what I've learned here in the valley to make the valley a better place.
All right. Counselor Brawls. Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet, Cliff.
Welcome. It's great to have you here. How long, is this a permanent position or is it temporary or what?
Correct. He's backfilling my position.
So it's permanent, it's on mapping, right?
Yes. Creating maps and utilizing data that deals with the city itself.
All right, well, thank you.
And also planning. So there's more than one of us to answer Andy's questions and things like that, too.
Glad to have you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Counselor Carson.
Welcome. I just wanted to tell you welcome and good job. I've seen some of the stuff you've done. It's good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Clifton, I also would like to welcome you to the team, and you're with a great group of people, and I'm quite sure that you're gonna be doing wonderful things for our community. I'm looking forward to seeing your work.
Absolutely. Me, too.
Wish you the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. That's it. Thank you all. Let's go. All righty. Up next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A. Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Okay, Mayor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Royals.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Oh, yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have, under Business Brought Forward by City Staff, the first reading of Ordinance Number 6-2020. Is that gonna be you, Harry, or?
It's gonna be me, Mayor.
Eric, okay.
This is an ordinance dealing with formalizing our restitution process. Restitution is any pecuniary loss suffered by a victim, and it does not include damages for physical or mental pain and suffering, loss of consortium, enjoyment of life, and things like that, but it is out-of-pocket expenses. The municipal court has been awarding restitution in appropriate cases pursuant to certain provisions that we do have already in our ordinance, which say essentially that the municipal court may award restitution in appropriate cases. What this ordinance does is codifies how that process works, and it is built to reflect the process in state code for awarding of restitution in county court and in district court. And it provides procedures for the prosecution to make a motion, deadlines for doing that, deadlines for actually holding restitution hearings and making or not making an award. Also, more clearly defines what does and does not constitute restitution. So it kind of just is a way to formalize what has been going on without really appropriate guidelines. And we've run into a couple issues in municipal court where there's been some question as to timing or some question as to what gets counted as restitution, and this will be very helpful to fill that in.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Eric, has the judge reviewed this, and is he in support of our proposal?
He is in support of doing this. He has not reviewed in detail the ordinance, and I don't believe that he should since he's gonna be charged with enforcing it. I don't want him to be part of driving.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry. That was a dumb question. I apologize for that.
No, that's fine.
The other piece is, and I was trying to go through it, and I apologize, are there limits to the amount of restitution because we're a municipal court?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any further comments? No one's raising their hands, no text? All right. Good deal. Well, anyone would like to make a motion? Charlie wants to make...
Mayor?
Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll make the motion that we pass on first reading Ordinance Number 6-2020 and set it for a public hearing on April 1st at 7:00 or sooner or after.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Carson. Counselor Royals.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next, we have under Item 2A, under City Manager Legal, a public hearing and second reading of Ordinance Number 8-2020, an ordinance amending Section 10-221F4. So who's gonna cover that?
I'll take it, Mayor.
Eric.
I'm not sure. Heather, are you gonna cover this?
You know, I could do this one. I did this one on its first reading, so I'm happy to do it on its second reading. Or no, wait a minute, did I? Yes, I did. I did. And so this, as, when it was before you on first reading, it was actually in conjunction with your resolution that established various food zones, designated food zones, both in city parks and in some areas in city rights of way. And in doing so, we realized that one of the ideal designated areas is not on a paved surface, which is what our ordinance otherwise requires. And in further discussing that, didn't really see any particular reason why it should be required to be on a paved surface. And so what this ordinance does is removes that limitation, allows food zones to be on gravel areas within the city, and in particular, the benefit to that is the one by Carroll Park. It does keep in place other distance restrictions from the curb and requirements on being able to park and not have to back out onto roadways. So it's really just eliminating the pavement requirement and would apply not only to the city's designated food zones, but to any mobile food vending area. So one on private property would work as well, although bear in mind, there is still a limitation that it has to be on developed property. Cannot be on vacant undeveloped land.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. So at this time, I will open up a public hearing for the second reading of Ordinance Number 8-2020, an ordinance amending Section 10-221F4. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium and voice any comments or concern? If so, please come up to the podium, state your name, and voice those concerns. Okay, seeing that we have no one coming forward, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel. Counselor Carson.
I would make a motion that we approve Ordinance 8-2020 on second reading, amending Section 10-221F4 of the Code of Ordinances of City Alamosa.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further comments? Okay? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Royals.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next is Item 2B, a motion to suspend limitation on remote participation in meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, part of your policy, council policy that you just adopted, deals with remote participation in meetings and places certain limitations on that. As it happens, this meeting meets those limitations in the sense that you do have a forum actually physically present currently for the meeting. You do have the meeting being chaired by someone who is physically present. The other limitations are irrelevant to any particular meeting, but for instance, council members are limited to, I think it's three per year. What this motion does is suspend all of those limitations on attending meetings remotely during this COVID-19 pandemic because it may well be that it becomes necessary to hold meetings, but difficult to do that unless it's remote and zoomed in and even chairing it that way, and also having those count against a total number that could be done in a year. The rationale under which that policy was developed didn't really think about, well, gee, what if we have a pandemic and nobody can actually show up for meetings? So simplest way to deal with it is just to do a motion to lift those during this pandemic. We could think about revising that at some time in the future to build in some escape door for something like that, but this certainly takes care of the instant issue.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Counselor Carson.
I'll make a motion that we suspend limitation on remote participation in meetings during COVID-19. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. If not, please vote.
Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Royals.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have Item 2C, a proclamation declaring COVID-19 a local disaster emergency. Tonight, we're going to have Counselor Daniel read the proclamation. As a counsel, everything we do here is as a team, and we try to have a united front whenever we have serious situations and issues like we're dealing with in this community. We oftentimes share in reading a proclamation so that different people get an opportunity to share in the proclamation process. So tonight, we have Counselor Daniel, who's also the Director of Behavior Health, who's going to read the proclamation.
And before we do that, Mayor, I would suggest that we actually have counsel vote on the proclamation. The way both the city ordinances and the state statute that deals with disaster declarations or proclamations are written is that the mayor, under the city ordinance or the city manager, under the state statute, can declare a disaster or emergency, but only for seven days. If it's gonna be longer than seven days, counsel has to approve that. So this kind of rolls that into one step, and I would like counsel to approve the proclamation declaring an emergency if it is of a mind to do so, and then we can actually issue and read the proclamation. And the reason for the proclamation is twofold. One is to give to the city manager the ability and authority to rapidly respond to quickly changing issues without necessarily having to bring something through counsel. And the second is to, to the extent necessary, And the second is to, to the extent necessary, to give the city the opportunity to take advantage of state and federal disaster relief funds as they may become appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much Eric. Appreciate that. Counselor Carson?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Daniel?
If there are no conversations that anyone has to have, I do think this is something that makes sense. So I will move that we declare COVID nineteen a local disaster emergency.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, let's please start voting.
Counselor Carson? Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Vehill?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, so now that the motion passed, we will now have Counselor Daniel read the proclamation.
Whereas people are at risk from the COVID nineteen coronavirus in the city of Alamosa, and whereas on March tenth twenty twenty, Governor Jared Polis declared a state of emergency in response to COVID nineteen to ensure that resources are available to the state to combat the disease. And on March thirteenth twenty twenty, President Donald Trump declared a national emergency in response to COVID nineteen. And whereas the risks posed by this natural threat require early warning for and preparation by those potentially or actually affected, as well as prompt coordination of response and recovery actions or special regulations of access, activities, persons, property, or the environment in order to protect the health, safety, or welfare of people to limit damage to property or the environment within the city of Alamosa. And whereas the city council serves as the Alamosa Disaster Emergency Council under direction of the mayor pursuant to section six one of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Alamosa, also known as the code. And whereas section six four of the code gives the mayor the power to declare by written proclamation an emergency exists when there is a reasonable cause to believe that life, property, or public welfare are threatened by any natural disaster, which declaration shall be limited to seven days, except by consent of the city council for a longer period, and COVID nineteen presents such a natural disaster. And whereas Colorado revised statutes twenty-four thirty-three point five through seven oh nine gives the city manager the power to declare a local disaster, which declaration shall be limited to seven days, except by consent of the city council for a longer period. And now therefore, we, the city, the Alamosa City Council, by virtue of the authority vested in us, hereby declare that a state of local disaster emergency in and for the city of Alamosa now exists and is so ordered, authorized, and approved for the duration of the state of Colorado's declared state of emergency, unless sooner terminated by the mayor by written proclamation, when the COVID nineteen emergency situation is no longer found to exist. Be it known that the mayor of the city of Alamosa hereby advises the governor of the state of Colorado, the state's Office of Emergency Management, and the citizens of the city of Alamosa that a state of local disaster emergency exists. Be it also known that this proclamation authorizes and directs the city manager to put such emergency measures into effect as to her appear required in the circumstances, including the duty to publish and disseminate information concerning the COVID nineteen pandemic. And be it further known that this proclamation further authorizes the city of Alamosa, its residents, and its businesses to apply for assistance from the state of Colorado, the federal government, or other available resources, adopted this eighteenth day of March twenty twenty.
Thank you very much Counselor Daniel. Appreciate that. Okay. Up next, we have under item three A, a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty. Yes. Yes Counselor Grego.
Yeah, before you move on Mayor, in declaring this a local disaster, you know, I've been getting a lot of calls on what people are supposed to do, businesses and stuff. And I even got hold of our city attorney. And are we going to further clarify to the community out there what they can do and what they cannot do, especially like in the business area?
Well, I'll have Heather respond to that. I know we are taking actions in that area already, but I'll let Heather respond to that. Heather?
Thank you, thank you Mayor. And some of this I was gonna do under staff update, but it fits just as perfectly under this topic as well. We are using our social media and the webpage to post all the updates from the Governor Polis and the mandates that he's putting out, as well as anything we receive from a public health agency. We have also modified the operations of the city and its facilities and we're keeping all of that on the webpage and using our social media and press releases. Kathy in her role as Economic Development Director has actually been hitting the pavement and making contact with a lot of businesses. Not only, as you can imagine, the restaurants are feeling this impact and our other small businesses, but the hotels are seeing a very significant impact of cancellation and those types of changes. So she's trying to make sure she's aware of what's going on and then also working with the Small Business Development Center, SBDC, as they file paperwork to see if there's any assistance either through the state or the federal level for those businesses who are impacted. And so we're working very closely with them in those efforts. And she's doing a great job trying to connect those pieces. We just did receive word today in regards to the school district will be closed until April seventeenth. They will be providing additional information on if there's going to be online schools and education or what that might look like, but it appears that the actual physical presence at the school will not occur before April seventeenth, which will impact not only our workforces, but many others in the community. In regards to Charlie's question, when he called the city attorney and the restaurants and if they are complying with the governor's order to only do carryout or delivery, we've alerted the county health department that if they need assistance in getting this message out, but that we see them as the lead in making sure that there's compliance. But we can imagine they're probably getting pulled in a lot of different directions. And so we do have some of our staff ready to help spread the word and give that gentle reminder if we do hear of someone who's not complying with those mandates. I don't, at this point in time, see us in a huge authoritative type of figure. I think reminders and discussions during this time of panic and fear is probably more appropriate and that we're willing to do those. But it's a little scary out there, I imagine, for our public. We had been debating not announcing this, but we are getting enough questions that we need to do it. In regards to utility payments for the city, we won't be making any disconnects during this time. However, the bills are not being waived. So if someone is impacted by either business closure or they've lost their job or something like that related to this pandemic, they should contact the finance department. And I would also urge people, even if you can only pay a portion of it, it's better than doing a more costly or pay agreement later on. And so, but we are going to be flexible and we are not doing disconnects during this time either. I can take any questions if council has any.
Okay.
One question if I may Mayor.
Go ahead. Counselor Grego, go ahead.
There's been, there's been some confusion as far as where they came out and said that if you have five and fewer, it was allowed, that's not right, correct? As far as people in your, you can have five or less people, as long as they're sitting far apart, that's not correct, right?
That's right, that's not correct. The five or fewer number comes from if you're doing a takeout service, you can have five people gathered waiting to pick up their takeout, but you can, you cannot do dine-in service at all for any number of people.
And also, also Counselor, private clubs, like for example, the American Legion, the Yalves, and where their, where their membership only, they have to buy this also?
That's right, they cannot do food service.
Nobody's exempt?
No, well, no, that's not true. Adam State would be exempt. Colleges can do cafeteria food service. That was just clarified by the governor's order that came out yesterday evening. So, not the governor's order, I'm sorry, the Colorado Department of Health order. Was it, they issued an amended order on that that came out yesterday evening.
Mayor Counselor Vehill has his hand up and Heather has her hand up.
Is a homeless shelter also exempt?
I don't think so. I would have to look that up. I don't remember off the top of my head. Oh, Christina is nodding her head.
Counselor Dan?
When I read it, there were a couple of things in the homeless shelters were one of them that I thought was in the public health notification.
Mayor Counselor Vehill has his hand up.
Okay. Up next Counselor Vehill after Eric respond?
No, let him, let Counselor Vehill go. I'm gonna open up the amended ordinance.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanna give kudos to Heather about the, about the questions about the utility. I filled in a few of those questions with constituents around town and I think it's the best way to go. So I appreciate that Heather.
Thank you Counselor Vehill. Any other comments or any other questions? Any hands up or any text? Okay, and I just want to follow up with what Heather mentioned earlier about our economic development specialist Kathy Rogers Woods. I can assure you, she's been going up and down, not only downtown, but all over Alamosa, reaching out, talking to the businesses, being proactive, letting them know what they can do and also just clarifying some of the issues that they have concerns with. And I'm really thankful that we have her in her role because it's like perfect. She's been talking with the hotel owners, downtown business owners, and all sorts of business owners and I know that for a fact. So Heather, thank you for allowing her to do that in the community. That's very helpful and proactive. Okay.
There was no Heather letting her do anything. Kathy knew what needed to get done and she went out there and did it. So she deserves all the credit on that one.
Awesome, that is good. Thank you so much. Okay, so Eric has his hand up.
Right, so the answer to the question is that crisis shelters or similar institutions are exempt from the public health department's order.
Okay, thank you Eric for clarifying that. Okay, I just want to make sure, Counselor Carson and then Counselor Grego.
So would that, would that then, in this emergency scenario, Eric exempt the rec center?
No, well, only if the rec center were being used as a...
Well, I'm saying for like the showering, what her question earlier, if we were to, because Heather fielded that question earlier. So that would mean gathering of several people. Would that then exempt that scenario or that part of the rec center for that? Probably, we'd have to look into that.
Well, this order closes down recreation centers, so...
No, and I understand that, that's why I'm saying, that by default would say that we couldn't use the rec center to shower or to use it for any of that. So if we were to use it, you know, could we use this to leverage that, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, if, if, I think that, and I would have to maybe think about this, but I think this is my answer, no matter how long I think about it, that if we are just using the rec center because there's a shower there, in other words, it's a shower facility, it's not a rec center, that that would be fine. It's not, it's not being used as a rec center then.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So I want to be mindful to make sure that I give everyone an opportunity to make comments. Do we have anyone raising their hand?
Christina has her hand up.
Okay, Heather, go ahead.
Forgot me there.
Okay, let's go with, let's let Heather respond and then Counselor Grego, you'll be next, okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to make sure with that line of questioning, we won't be opening back up the rec center for general use. The only thing we are looking into is a limited use of the showers only. And even in that scenario, it would be within a very narrow timeframe. We would be limiting the amount of time as well as the numbers that are able to access it. But that's only after we've checked with county health to make sure that we understand the requirements for sanitation of the showers and that we would be able to meet those. So I just want to make sure that's clear and I don't want any misinformation out there to the public. I know, I think council understood all of that, but we can't open back up the rec center. It would be a very narrow window that we would be looking at. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, now Counselor Grego.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
I guess what I heard out there was that La Puente has closed the stores to the homeless. Is that true? And also, I didn't, you were breaking up when the Counselor Eric was explaining something about the homeless.
Okay, does anyone want to respond to that, that comment? Yes Counselor Carson, go ahead.
I did see that as well yesterday. I did see an announcement on, it was online somewhere, said La Puente was closing to, closing to public access. I don't know if it said it was closing its door to its clients. I know it said it was closing public access, so it's kind of what it sounded like in the message.
Yeah, yes, or there is currently continuing to be services.
But no, nobody else in and out?
There's also not even community meals.
That's the one at Presbyterian? Okay.
Okay, all right. So Counselor Grego, did you hear that?
Mayor, is it, is it just me? I'm hearing like a bunch of echoing.
Yes, probably you.
The only time I could hear it clearly is when, when the city manager speaks.
Yeah, it might be because of your calling in instead of being on the Zoom. So, did that answer your question?
So the question, my question was that La Puente is open to the homeless, correct?
So Counselor Grego and Sine, if I say this wrong, if you want to come up to the microphone, but they are currently open to the guests that they have. They're not open to the public and that their community meals have been suspended, but there's a sack lunch program available at the Presbyterian Church.
Okay.
Is that better? Okay.
All right, thank you Mayor.
You're welcome, thank you Counselor Grego. Okay, good. Any hands up, any text, any red lights? Good, all right, let's move on to...
Counselor Vehill just put his hand up.
Oh, he just had, he just put his hand up. All right, Counselor Vehill.
Hi Mayor, I guess I have a few comments I want to, I want to say about all this, but I'll wait till council comes.
Okay, all right. Thank you Counselor Vehill. So we're gonna move down to item number three, Human Resource Risk Management. We're gonna have a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty and ordinance amending the established pay plan for city officers and employees. That's gonna be Heather, okay Heather?
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
This is the second reading. At the first reading, I shared that for about two to three years, we have been looking at a reorganization of the Public Works Utility Division. We had significant concerns about our succession planning and if we had a few key positions leave, we wouldn't be able to easily replace them. And given the legal requirements to operate the treatment facilities, that presents a serious threat to our operations for utilities. The other concern we were facing for that division is significant turnover. And so the plan that's presented to council for second reading tonight is to address both of those and place them appropriately in the pay plan.
Okay, thank you Heather. So at this time, I will open it up for a public hearing for ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance? If so, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing that we have no one coming to the podium, we will now close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to council for comments. Counselor Carson?
If there are no comments, I would approve, I would move that we approve ordinance seven dash twenty twenty on second reading, amending employee pay plan.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Vehill?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, under item C, we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay. Doesn't look like we have any committee reports, so we would move down to item D, Staff Announcements. Heather?
Thank you Mayor. I actually did all of mine when we were discussing the proclamation for local disaster. I have nothing further. I don't know that anyone there from staff has anything.
Harry?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I do have a few.
And if you could speak into the mic for us, appreciate it.
I believe Andy has one. As he's making his way up, I'll quickly talk about the work session on, for the parking permit for ASU that has been rescheduled to April twenty ninth. Kind of wanted to get that in front of you to put on your calendars.
So can everyone hear Andy? I just want to make sure. I'm not Andy, I'm sorry. Harry.
Hey, thank you, I take that as a compliment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is that better?
Can everyone hear Harry?
I did.
Okay, good.
Okay. A few items that we purchased or had the opportunity to purchase this year that were identified on the CIP. We were able to replace, replace one of the Street Crew's utility trucks, the paint truck that we've been having quite a few problems with. Nice thing about that, we were able to purchase it locally through Town and Country. They were the lowest qualified proposed bid. And then last year, in the twenty nineteen CIP, we had identified a replacement dump truck. And with that, we were able to purchase the snow plow and the sander. Granted, it was ordered and awarded eight months ago, but we just recently received that. And I think you'll see that probably roam in the streets, hopefully if we get a, we get a little bit of snow. The nice thing, I think Heather deserves a kudos on this, is the plow was subsidized through a mini dollar grant that Heather was able to write and was awarded successfully. So that helped offset some of the cost. On First Street, we're getting, moving forward on the, on the construction. I'm sure you've seen utility workers out there relocating the gas, electric and the needed phone lines. They'll continue with one or single lane closures for the next three to four weeks and then we'll start our scope of work going in there and replacing the street itself. So right now, we'll still maintain a single lane closure, but we're expecting around the fourth week of April to get started with closing it for through traffic, so.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions with Harry? No? Harry, I apologize for calling you Andy. I was looking at Andy and calling your name, I apologize for that.
It's okay, I'll take it as a compliment.
Okay, alrighty. So no comments? All right, thank you so much. Any other staff announcement? No? Okay, that'll bring us down to the liquor licensing authority action under Consent Calendar B. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar B.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Vehill?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us down to council comments. So I want to be mindful and make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to say any comments that they have. So what I'm going to do is I am going to start with the ones who are not here first. We'll start off with Counselor Grego and then we'll have Counselor Hensley and then we'll have... and then we'll have uh, councillor Vehill. And then um, the council members here will start at the far right, um, with councillor Carson, councillor Broyles, councillor Daniels, and I'll wrap things up. Is that okay? All right, councillor Grealio.
Yes, uh, just one comment. I hate talking to these uh, uh, through these uh, microphones and stuff. Uh, next time, if I have to wear a mask or whatever, I will have to, I'll wear a mask, but I will be present.
We would welcome you here.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Any other comments, councillor? Any other comments, councillor?
Did you get my?
We, we got you.
Did you get my comment?
Yes, the next time, I'll bring you a mask, so you can attend, so that'd be great. So, any, any other comments?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, councillor Hensley.
I think I would just say is that obviously in these challenging times, um, I just commend all of our employees, our staff, actually our whole community, everybody who's, seems to be really helping in and trying to figure out where they can help. And I think it really shows how strong our community is. And obviously, I think we've still got a ways to go, but I know we're gonna come out of this strong. It's great to see everybody work together.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And uh, I guess the reason why I didn't go to the meeting today in person, was that, uh, you know, they talk about this abundance of caution and that, and um, this, this social distancing and that type of stuff. That's why I did not uh, go to, uh, in person. But to echo a few of the things that Ms. Hensley said, uh, there's a lot of uh, anxiety, there's a lot of uh, people freaking out uh, across the country and in our town. And I, I just wanna offer to people that we will get, we'll do this together. Um, I think about all the, who are, I mean, of childcare, or their kids are home from school the next month. How about that, and what can they do, and all that kinda stuff. So there's a lot of stress on our society right now. But um, we, we listen to what our leaders are saying at the, we need to stay home, we need to stay away. And I, would like, directly to um, my generation, the millennials, uh, we are not in, we are not, we need to listen to people and, oh, because we, we can, we can carry this thing and affect the older generation, that's not okay. And someone said it best today, that um, our, our grandfathers and our great grandparents rushed to, to World War Two and up to fight our countries, and Britain across our country went to the factories and worked, and they built planes and stuff in, in daytime, and asking us to stay at home. There's a really big difference there. So I would please urge people to stay at home, stay away from others. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vehill. Okay, so now we'll go to uh, councillor Carson.
Well, just to kinda reiterate what councillor Vehill said about anxiety, there is, there is a lot of scared people in our community and, you know, and in society in general right now. And I think the best way that we can deal with it is, is to unite, you know, and to really, really help each other out in this time, you know, help your neighbor. Like he said, there's people that don't have, um, you know, we're supposed to be under this social distancing uh, scenario and, and it is, it is good practice, but we also have to keep in mind that there is people that may have not gotten supplies, maybe are not ready for this kind of, of scenario. And we just really need to look out for each other and unite and, and be proud of the community you're with and in, cause we have really come together. I've seen it and uh, I am proud of everyone. Everyone in this town is stepping up, everyone in the valley. So um, again, just unite, be mindful of each other and look out for one another. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Carson. Councillor Broyles?
Yeah, I think uh, our national government, state government, local governments have taken appropriate steps to minimize this, this pandemic. And I appreciate the, that their leadership. I'm also very appreciative of the people in Alamosa, as I travel around, they're very respectful, uh, very courteous. I don't see any major issue and I, I think if we work together has been said and uh, and eliminate any, what, paranoia, we'll get through it all right. Just keep a, just keep, use common sense and common courtesy and I think that's where we ought to go. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Broyles. Councillor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So Heather and Andy, I wanted to say thank you. I know Sine had sent me like kind of just a heads up about some of her concerns and I shared those with you, so thank you for already brainstorming. I appreciate that a lot, um, because I feel like there's some movement. And so, um, I know we won't have all of the answers maybe, but at least the conversation has been started, so I really appreciate that today. Um, and the amount of communication and support you're giving our team members in the city and um, all of the community members who are struggling. So now I'm gonna kinda put my, the thoughts around the anxiety and the fear and, and just some kind of gentle reminders about, you know, staying safe and healthy. And if you're feeling sick, um, we do have a local nurse triage number that you can call. You do not have to show up to your um, local doctor's office. In fact, it's recommended that you call ahead of time and tell them your symptoms so they can triage with you and give you some guidance um, over the phone. And so, you know, really encouraging people to do that. Um, and for the anxiety and the fear, sometimes what we need to do is really take a step back from all of the media coverage. Take a step back and maybe go outside for a walk. It is absolutely supported to go outside for a walk. And um, running by yourself or going for a walk and, and maintaining the social distancing is, is still um, okay. So getting outside, eating um, as healthy as you can, ensuring that you're getting enough sleep and drinking enough water. All of those help reduce anxiety and fear. Um, the other thing that we're gonna have in our community is people will be isolating themselves and they'll be distancing themselves and they're afraid to come out of their house. And so dealing with some of the things that can come up for them while they're alone in their house. So if you know someone, especially who's older, who's afraid, maybe give them a call a couple of times a week. If they know how to FaceTime, do those kinds of things electronically that they can. I know some of our phone lines are struggling right now. Uh, but really kind of reaching out to those people to be um, as, you know, connected as possible in the um, in the process with what they have going on. I think that can feel very, very challenging. And sometimes we forget when we're going through our day to day that there are people um, at home. But really letting people know that they, they can call. The other thing is if people are feeling in crisis, if they're alone, we do have the Colorado Crisis Services Line, uh, which is one eight four four, four nine three, eight two five five. They are open and available, um, and my understanding is that they're still operating as, as they, they need to and people can get support there or just kind of talk, especially if they're uh, feeling suicidal or worried about someone else who may be suicidal, having some of those conversations. But honestly, it, it's really about taking care of each other, as my fellow councillors have said, and, and taking care of ourselves and deciding what we need. Uh, and so really just encouraging everyone to talk and reach out and connect differently than we have, you know, in the past by being face to face, but maybe finding those other regions or other ways to do that. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you for everyone um, really reaching out to our communities and our population and doing what we can to pick each other up um, from a safe social distance. Um, and then councillor Grealio did say he had another comment.
Okay, councillor Grealio?
Mayor, if I may, uh, one thing that is so important is that whatever information that we send out there, that it be clear and it, it is, and it's, and it's not conflicting at all. Cause that's what people get scared of, that's why everybody is out there talking about five people or less or, or you can't open and all that. It has to be clear and, and whatever direction that we're gonna, uh, whatever information, it's gotta be transparent. And it's gotta be coming, I guess just from one, one person, either the mayor or somebody. Because once you get a lot of conflicting comments out there, that's what scares the community out there.
Okay, any other hands up or any comments? Okay, Eric?
It's a comment, but I actually just had a chance to check my email when I was looking for that order earlier that I was finding to clarify. And about ten minutes ago, I got an email from David Broadwell, who is the um, uh, head legal guy at CML about an order that was just issued by the Colorado Department of Health effective essentially midnight tonight. All mass gatherings shall be limited to no more than ten people. Gathering subject to this, gatherings subject to this order include, but are not limited to, community, civic, public, leisure, faith-based, sporting events, spectators, concerts, conventions, fundraisers, parades, fairs, festivals, and any similar activity that brings together ten or more persons in a single room or space at the same time. Colorado courts and the state legislature are exempted as are normal operations at airports, bus and train stations, healthcare facilities, grocery retail stores, um, places where persons may be in transit for essential goods and services. Office environments, government buildings where essential government services are offered are also exempt. So, we'll, we'll be thinking about that, but, and I'll send this order around to you all as well, but that, that's the, the latest.
Okay, thank you Eric, thank you councillor Grealio. Councillor Broyles, can you turn on your mic?
I, I got a question, how, how long is this order for?
Thirty days.
So that would be April, what?
Uh, April seventeenth. And, and also indicated that the school closure is, to April seventeen is a statewide school closure as well.
Okay, are there any other comments before I say any closing remarks? Do we have any hands up or any um, text? No, we're good? All right, before I say my final closing remarks, I would like to thank council and staff for being extremely mindful tonight to make sure that we had an orderly meeting. Uh, everyone got an opportunity to voice their concerns and comments and I believe the meeting uh, went really well. So thank you all so very much, along with the staff who made sure that we had the proper arrangements uh, to have that meeting here tonight. So during these times of uncertainty, it's important that we unite for the common goal of overcoming the COVID nineteen virus. I'm confident that our healthcare partners, community stakeholders, and community leaders are doing their best to protect our well-being. I encourage our community members to follow all safety instructions and preventative measures. This shall pass and we will overcome as a united community. So thank you all for everything and your help and uh, we wish you all the best, the best. Meeting is adjourned.